Getting the thumbs up from the back there. All right, good evening, everyone. Like to call the meeting to order for this evening of the City of Elgin Planning and Zoning Commission. Look to staff to call the roll.
Commissioner Abouali?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Lopez?
Here.
Commissioner McGala?
Here.
Commissioner Lillip?
Here.
President. All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from the September 12, 2022 session. Is there any discussion? If not, the Chair will entertain a motion for the approval of those meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lillip?
Yes.
Commissioner Lillip?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner McGala?
I'll abstain due to my absence.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
I'll make a search.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item D. It's Chairman's opening statement. It's my opportunity to welcome all of you here tonight. As always, welcome my fellow commissioners, those of you watching remotely now or in the future. We've got two items on the agenda tonight as far as petitions to be considered. One is a preliminary and final plat for Nestler Road and Marigold Drive, and then the other is an annexation preliminary plat, planned development as a map amendment for a property out on Hops Road. We'll hear more about each of those petitions coming up, but first, since there's quite a few new faces up in the audience with us tonight, just want to briefly go through the role of this commission. We are the recommending body to City Council. So we hear each of these petitions. As they come up, we look to city staff for their presentation. We, as a commission, ask staff if they've got any, we have any questions of staff, I'm sorry. And then we invite the petitioner team to come on up where you'll present. We'll ask questions of the petitioner team. Then, following that, we open each of these petitions up to public comment. So if you're here to speak in support of or against any of these petitions, that's your opportunity. Following that, we close the public hearing portion of each of these petitions. We take a look back to city staff if there's any final or closing comments, and then, as a commission, we deliberate and vote on each of these petitions. And again, since we're the recommending body, we pass, I can hear myself now, it's a little bit better, thank you. We pass the recommendation on to City Council, and for those of you who are here tonight as the petitioner team, you would then work with staff for the dates for the two City Council meetings, which typically follow these petitions. So it's always, tonight, we open and close the public hearing portions. If you've got questions or comments, tonight is your opportunity to bring them before us. So, moving forward now with the agenda, it is, those of you who are going to be testifying night, tonight, please stand and take the oath from the court reporter, even if you think you might be commenting tonight. All right, thank you. Moving on, then, the first petition is 34-22, again for Nestler Road and Marigold Drive.
Thank you, Chairman Cox. And just for people in the audience, it looks like some of the speakers in the back of the room may not be working, so if you can't hear any of us, you might want to move forward, there's some space in the front room. Okay, let's see if this works. So, the first petition before you tonight is the application by Dr. Horton as applicant and CTT trustee of the trust number 8002364198 as a property owner, who is requesting preliminary and final plat of subdivision approval for the West Point Gardens South Phase III subdivision. And as usual, we'll start with the aerial map of the subject property. Now, this is a general aerial map of the entire West Point Gardens subdivision. As you can see, this, the subdivision encompasses an area that is generally south of Route 20 and west of Nestler Road. The subject property of tonight's petition is the area outlined in green. That is the 23 and a half acre property, that's the location for the proposed West Point Gardens South Phase III. The entire subdivision is 173 acres, and it's part of what was known Meyer Farm that was annexed to the city in 2005. Shortly after the annexation, the property was, received approval for a preliminary plat of subdivision, and then final plat of subdivision for areas north of Gansett Boulevard. That was to be known as Phase I, and then everything south of Gansett was going to be Phase II. Then in 2015, the applicant, the owner, came to the city, requested an amendment to the previously approved preliminary plat, which was granted. That then was approved as a West Point Gardens South subdivision, and that was going to be subdivided into three phases. So Phases I, II, and IIa have been approved, and all homes have been completed. And now we're on to the final Phase III for the West Point Gardens South. That's again the area in the green. So, the proposed subdivision includes 74 single-family lots. Those are generally between 60 and 64 feet in width, and approximately 125 to 134 feet in depth, which results in lot areas that range from 7,500 to 8,500 square feet. The subdivision also includes a 1.6 acre open space parcel, generally in the center of this phase, that would be owned and maintained by the HOA. After this final phase is completed, overall West Point Gardens subdivision will have a total of 428 residential units. Of that, 384 would be single-family and 44 townhome units. So, the Dr. Horton, which is the national builder that would be building homes on this, on this final phase, is looking to build the same six-model homes that they are currently building in Highland Woods subdivision. All model homes, and these are examples of them, would have fiber cement siding, and most of the, most of the models would have some type of masonry on the front elevation. All model homes include a four-sided architecture that includes eve overhangs on all sides of the building, and at least a couple windows on each side of the, of the elevation. Most model homes also have a six-foot-deep front porch. As you can see, some model homes come with a two-car attached garage, while others come with a three-car attached garage. Generally, the square footage of these homes ranges from 1,711 square feet for the smallest ones, up to 3,044 square feet for the larger two-story homes with finished basements. So with that, staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the packet, and representatives of the applicant are here and can address the commission.
And we do have proper notice, correct?
We do.
All right, thank you. All right, I will start on my right. Commissioner Wilmuth, questions for staff?
No questions.
No questions.
Commissioner McGala?
Does the city consider having the petitioner add some proposed uses for that open space? I mean, just looking at the area in general, I mean, I don't see too much like a way of playground equipment for kids, other than, you know, maybe Meyer Park, but it's kind of a long way to go. Has there been any conversations with the developer?
Well, we've had those conversations a long time ago, back initially in 2005, when the whole area was annexed, and the preliminary plat was approved, and then subsequently in 2015, when a revised preliminary plat was approved. So, I'm going to try to show here if this works. There is a neighborhood park that's substantial in size for the West Point Gardens subdivision, right here on the north side of Gansett Boulevard. It is maybe a couple blocks north of the subdivision in question, which is why we've pushed for some open space in this area. It's generally going to be passive open space with no playground or ball fields or anything like that. It was intended to be sort of a passive, just a flat open space for any type of activities. You may recall, if you're familiar with the area, this circle, the roundabout, is substantial in size, but it does not offer any type of recreational amenities. There are trees in the center, which is appropriate for a roundabout, although this one is substantial in size. So, so there's little opportunity for deviation from the preliminary plat that was approved in 2015, but nonetheless, there is some open space for this phase.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Jones?
No questions.
Commissioner Abouali?
No questions.
All right, my only other question for you is, I noticed in the board packet, we've got both MI Homes and Dr. Horton. Can you explain how we've got a couple builders listed on the packet?
That could have been oversight, although MI Homes was the builder for Phase II and IIa, and I believe they were the builder of the Phase I of this West Point Gardens South as well.
Okay. Yeah, it was on the landscape plan, so it wasn't a big deal. Just wanted to understand.
Understood. So, yeah, the landscape plan was approved for the entire West Point Gardens South. That includes all three phases, so they probably list the client at that time, which was MI Homes, so.
Makes sense. All right, that's my only question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll invite the petitioner or petitioner teams to come on up. Welcome. If you can, please state your name, spell it, give us your address, and then tell us your thoughts.
Yeah, Patrick.
Dr. Horton, at 621 West Churston, Marigold, 160540. Did a great job summarizing the intended plan here, compared to the steps we took to develop it as it was first intended back in 2015, considering that we're triggering or moving to the previously expirant. Our intention here is to...
Build out the final 74 lots as they were intended, and with absolutely no changes to the original plan. So, and as was stated, we intend to bring in the projects that have been approved by staff down the street of Highland Woods, which has been very successful for us.
Okay, thank you. As promised, we'll have the commission now ask any questions they may have of you.
Sure.
So I'll start on my left. Commissioner Abouali?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No questions.
Commissioner McGala?
Can you confirm the city's assessment as to the open space? And there's no plans to develop it?
Correct.
Recreational in terms of playground equipment, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
No questions, thank you.
And Commissioner Wilmuth?
No questions.
All right, I don't have any questions for you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up. All right, now, as promised, is the opportunity for those of you in the audience who want to comment on this petition, come on up to the front and come to the lectern. Going once, going twice. All right, we'll close the public hearing portion of this petition, then, and look to city staff if there's anything you'd like to add.
Let me refer to that.
All right, then, at this point in time, the Chair will entertain a motion for this petition, which is 34-22.
We'll just recommend that City Council approve petition number 34-22, subject to the conditions outlined within our packet, and to adopt the findings of the commission. Those findings also provided within our packet.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Abouali?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McGala?
Yes.
Commissioner Lillip?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
We'll check the votes.
All right, thanks for coming tonight. And like I said, work with DeMire on the upcoming dates as this moves forward to City Council. All right, we will take a moment to reset here. Moving on to the second item on our agenda for petitions tonight, it's got three petition numbers, so I think there's a little bit to be heard here, for 36W987, Hops Road.
And, again, for the, we do have proof of proper notice on this one as well. So, this next petition before you is the application by fiduciary real estate development as applicant and Guyor Farm Limited Partnership and Audrey Guyor as property owners, who are requesting annexation preliminary plat of subdivision and planned development as a map amendment, approval with departures from the Elgin Municipal Code requirements, to subdivide the existing property and construct a multifamily development with 280 dwelling units in 14 two-story buildings with a community clubhouse, and a separate commercial outlot for future commercial development, all of the property that is generally located in the southwest corner of Randall Road and Hops Road. So, the subject property outlined in yellow is approximately 32 acres in size. As you can see, it is on the southwest corner of Randall and Hops. As you can see, a portion of the property has a red shade over it. That means that portion is in the city, while the northern portion of the property, there are two parcels that are currently unincorporated, and then that red parcel that is in the city. The southern parcel was annexed to the city in 2001 to allow for the annexation and development of the Otter Creek Elementary School that's immediately to the west. The property is improved with the single-family residence and two barn structures, and it is used for farming purposes. As you can see, to the west is the Otter Elementary School, that is owned CF Community Facility District. To the south is a single-family residence that's also used as a general contractor shop that's in unincorporated King County. Across this Randall Road to the east is the Fox Ridge Townhome Community, that's part of the City of Elgin, that's owned PMFR, Planned Multifamily Residence District. And then to the north, you see there are quite large properties at the northwest corner of Randall and Hops. Let's try the laser pointer. Okay, so generally, this, this property that is used for agricultural purposes, as it's kind of evident in this aerial map, this property is 44 acres in size, that is unincorporated in King County. Then, to the west here is the former Da Vinci Academy, that was annexed to the city in 2019, and it's currently used by a church, that's owned CF Community Facility District. And then, immediately to the west there, the, the three parcels outlined as such, is approximately 15 acres, and that is the property that is subject to a separate development application that was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission last month, to be developed and known as Avalon Trails Townhomes. That, that project is scheduled for the City Council review this month. So, the applicant is, has submitted a petition to annex the property, requested approval of preliminary plats, and requesting approval of a planned development to subdivide the property into generally two lots, one for commercial development and one for multifamily development, and construct 280-unit multifamily development. The corner property, the commercial outlot, would be 3.1 acres in size. That would be zoned PAB, Planned Area Business, that would be reserved for future commercial development. So there's no proposed development on the corner parcel. The remainder of the site, generally approximately 28 acres in size, would be reserved for this multifamily development, that would be zoned PMFR, Planned Multifamily Residence, that with the 280 units proposed, results in the net density of 11.2 acres, units per acre. That is well within the range that the comprehensive plan recommends for areas outside of the downtown. The comp plan recommends densities of 8 to 60 dwelling units per acre. The proposed development will be known as Seasons at Elgin, and the applicant can speak about other similar developments they've done in other surrounding communities. So, development will include 14 two-story walk-up buildings with 20 units in each. There would be eight units on the first floor and 12 units on the second floor. What's interesting about this development is that all units will have their own main entrances on the ground floor. There are also 12 attached garages with each building. Four of those garage spaces are actually tandem parking stalls, but in general, there are 12 parking stalls that are within attached garage of each building. This allows some dwelling units to have direct access to attached garage within the building. As you can see, the unit mix includes 30 studios, 121-bedroom units, 122-bedroom units, and 33-bedroom units, for the total of 280. Overall, there are 601 parking spaces proposed, that results in 2.14 parking spaces per unit. There are 168 stalls in garage spaces, both in, as part of the buildings, and then there are three detached garages that have a total of 24 stalls, and then there are 409 outdoor parking spaces within the general parking lots. So, the, the proposed development would have a community clubhouse, approximately 5,000 square feet, that would have a 24-hour state-of-the-art fitness center. The development would include various other amenities for, for gatherings and, and social interaction, generally within the clubhouse. The clubhouse building also includes a resort-style pool that would be enclosed with the six-foot-high open design fence. There's also a separate maintenance building that includes a, sort of a car wash, right here, that would be free of charge, I believe, to all the residents within the development. There's also a dog park that is proposed at the southeast corner, generally along Randall Road. All proposed buildings are the same, but they're very well-designed, with four-sided architecture, again, that includes fiber cement siding on all sides, and also brick masonry on all sides. All units have either ground floor outdoor patio or second floor outdoor balcony. And then detached garages, the clubhouse building, the refuse enclosures, they're all designed in the same architectural style with the same materials. The clubhouse is located generally right here, along Hops Road, for a more prominent location at the entrance into the development. So, the proposed development has two access points. They're both to Hops Road. As you can see, the one on the eastern, eastern end here, and then the second one here on the western end of the property. There would be no access to Randall Road, not only for the multifamily development, but also for the commercial development in the future. In fact, the commercial development will have to get access from the proposed eastern access drive that would be shared with the multifamily development. The applicant has agreed and has to dedicate 50 feet for Hops Road right-of-way, and then 70 feet for Randall Road right-of-way to King County. Randall Road is under King County Division of Transportation's jurisdiction. On top of that, there will be adding or providing a 15-foot utility easement to KDOT along Randall Road, and then, as you can see, they, they will be installing a multipurpose path indicated here in white, both along Hops Road, and then along Randall Road, with a, with a loop sort of around the, around the development. The proposal includes a gateway or an easement for a future City of Elgin entry monument that would generally be here in this area. This, this may be fine-tuned at the time of final engineering and final plat approval. It is important to note that this layout, it was done such that it can accommodate the anticipated improvements to the Randall and Hops interchange, which are visible here in sort of the red outline. King County is going to be undertaking this project fairly soon. We anticipate within two to three years. And so, the access point, the eastern access point to Hops Road is far west enough that it's not going to have any impact on the intersection improvements. King County has reviewed the plans and has no objection, has approved these, the proposed layout and the access points. In addition, King County is considering the installation of an overpass over the tracks that, that generally, you know, traverse right here. So, so Randall Road would be an overpass over those railroad tracks, and if that takes place, then the, the single-family residence to the south would lose its access, and so the 70-foot right-of-way to be dedicated to King County is adequate to allow for a new access driveway that would generally follow this, this layout, although obviously that may be modified down the road. So, this slide also shows the proposed improvements to Hops Road that the developer is required to make. The, this, the top-left drawing indicates, essentially what they're going to do is they're going to improve Hops Road and widen it to include three lanes overall, one travel lane in each direction, plus one center turn lane. That's the same arrangement that exists in front of the elementary school to the west. So, the center turn lane will allow for, for the, the access into the development that are designated left-turn lane at both the, the eastern and western access point. And then, the applicant would install the curb along the south property, or I should say, along the south side of Hops Road, the entire length of the property, and then, hopefully, in the future, when the townhome development comes in, it really depends which project comes in first, they will be required to install the curb along the north side of Hops Road, as, you know, along the front edge of their property. So, the development is, you know, requires several departures from the zoning ordinance. These are provided in your packet, but I'll try to go quickly through them. Generally, this, the code allows only one principal building per lot. Here, we have 14 main buildings plus the clubhouse. They, the, the proposed development, based on the sizes of units, is required to have a total of 616 parking spaces. Obviously, they're very close, they are proposing 601. There are some air conditioning units that are on the north side of the two buildings that are adjacent, closest to Hops Road, and those AC units are considered in the street yard, and they're generally not allowed in the street yard, so there's no other place for them to be because of the individual entrances for every, for every unit on all sides of the building. It's sort of a four-sided building. Maximum density, so, the code requires a minimum of 5,000 square feet per dwelling unit, and as it's proposed for the Lot 1, that results in maximum of 216 units that will be allowed per code. They're obviously proposing 280 units. That results in about 3,800 square feet of land area per dwelling unit. Street yard setback, based on the size of the overall Lot 1, is... Street yard setback, based on the size of the overall Lot 1, is 42B is required, I apologize. And they are proposing 35 feet. This was done in cooperation with the proposed townhome development to the north. It was important to the city that both townhomes on the north side of Hops Road, as well as these buildings on the south side of Hops Road, generally have the same setback from the roadway, so that as one travels down Hops Road, you have a unified streetscape. Interior setback, at the closest point, the, the vehicle use area is at four feet from the interior lot line where the code requires six feet. The overall, overall vehicle use area per dwelling unit, they can have up to 196 square feet. They're proposing 301,000 square feet. Again, they're trying to maximize the number of parking spaces that they're providing. Building floor area, these numbers are based on the, the total Lot 1 that is proposed. They can have up to 2,000, I'm sorry, 200,000, 703,000 square feet of, of floor area. They're obviously above that. And then number of street graphics, so being that it's a residential subdivision, only one entry gate subdivision graphic is allowed, up to 80 square feet. They will be having several signs, which are designed appropriately to, to provide unique entrances into the development. There will be three wall graphics on the, on the clubhouse building that will have seasons, and then there are, there's a monument graphic at the, the eastern entrance, and then there are, there are several gateway signs or directional graphics as you enter on that, on that eastern driveway. The fence I mentioned that needs to surround the, the pool by the clubhouse, the code allows only a four-foot open design. They're proposing a six-foot high for safety. It will be an open-designed fence, sort of ornamental fence, that we've been sort of accustomed to seeing in industrial developments. And then Lot frontage, so the subdivision ordinance requires that any new lot created has to be along a publicly dedicated right-of-way. They're proposing three stormwater detention outlets that are sort of landlocked and do not have frontage. Standards, the application is required to meet the standards for map amendments and plan developments. We have provided our overview of the standards in the packet, and staff recommends approval subject to the conditions outlined in the packet. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant's team is here, can also address the commission.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Start with Commissioner Lopez, questions for staff?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner McGala?
Demir, in terms of the density, it seems like it's pretty dense in terms of the variation, right? 5,000 square feet versus 3,862. Have there been any conversations with trying to reduce the number of units?
Generally, we, we'd like to see, the density is, again, something that we take a close look at, and we, we look at the guidance in the comprehensive plan. I think I mentioned, the comprehensive plan suggests density of 8 to 60 dwelling units per acre outside of the downtown, and they're at 11.2. So, at the end of the day, what was more important to us is to have a, a proper site layout and the proper architectures, especially along Randall and Hops. And then how many units are on the interior became less important to, to staff, because the more rooftops we have, the more density we provide, that is only going to attract more commercial development along Randall Road. This, the location of the property is kind of isolated, and, and there is no parking on Randall, there is no parking on Hops Road. They can't really have any negative impact on surrounding properties. I mean, essentially, all traffic is expected to go to Randall and come from Randall Road. They will be making improvements to accommodate for that, so the, the number, and again, there are numbers for the amount of vehicles that currently travel on Hops Road and, on Randall Road, and we felt that the additional units can, can adequately be accommodated by the existing roadways, especially with the, with the proposed improvements to Hops Road.
Are the two entrances on the northern border, are those right-in, right-out, or are they full?
They're full access points.
Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No questions.
Commissioner Woodamuth?
Is there any concern with the traffic resulting from the future commercial space sharing with the residential coming in there, using the same?
We don't necessarily have any concern with that. In fact, that's, that's the, that's the preferred alternative, rather than having a separate access point either to Randall or Hops. In fact, KDOT would not allow any of that. If there was ever going to be a, a commercial development on this site, it would have to be as close to Randall as possible, but then KDOT restricts the access point and how close it can be to Randall. And when you account for the, the new curve in Hops Road, this really seems to be the most logical and most appropriate access point. But based on the size, we don't anticipate this generating a substantial number of vehicles that would cause any kind of a backup, and if it does, it would be internally within the site, you know, not on, on the exterior.
And then you mentioned a part that's to be annexed as agricultural usage. Do you know specifically what type of?
I, I do not. I do not. Maybe the applicant's team may know that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Oboli?
Maybe I missed this already, but the first part that was annexed to the city, is it all going now to be annexed to the city, or is it?
Well, that's already annexed, so the annexation would only affect the area that does not have a color, so this sort of outline. There are, there are two parcels up here that are not in the city, and so the annexation would be of just those two parcels. Then there, the entire property outlined in yellow would be subdivided, and then also zoning, new zoning would affect the entire property in yellow.
And the commercial space, is that later in the future? Are they doing residential first, or is it plans to do it once?
Yeah, no, they currently do not have any, any plans for any type of commercial there. That's probably a better question for the applicant, if they, based on their experience with other similar developments in surrounding suburbs, what type of commercial development may come in there if they had any conversations with other developers of commercial sites?
All right, thank you. No more questions.
All right, my only question for you, and maybe, maybe needs to be for the developer team as well, is why do we have two parcels, one for commercial and one for residential, when we're kind of looking at this as a, as a PUD?
I think the applicant can probably address that. At the end of the day, this usually goes down, goes back to the, the acquisition of the property. They usually, whoever acquires the commercial land, they may get a mortgage, the, the title company needs a clean, clean parcel that would be sort of isolated, and then the remainder of the property would be continued to be owned by the developer and sort of as a, as a rental project.
So it may be developed separately by another group?
Absolutely, yep.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll invite the petitioner team to come on up. And as before, please state your name, spell it, give us your address, and then tell us your thoughts.
Yeah, good evening. My name is David Farrell from Fiduciary Real Estate Development, 789 North Water Street in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. Thank you for having me here this evening to present our ideas for this project, and Demir, thanks again for aligning our project well. I'm going to try to keep this brief and really give you a sense of who we are and what we do and what, how our vision came to be with this parcel. So, go to the next slide, Demir. So Fiduciary Real Estate was founded a little more than 35 years ago. We're probably the largest owner and operator multifamily of real estate in Wisconsin. We own about 8,000 apartment units and, currently, but have owned or developed upwards of 11,000 in our course of our history. Portfolio is valued at roughly a billion and a half dollars, and we've raised over 400 million in private equity over the last 10 years and placed over a billion dollars of financing on those projects. So we are one of the most well-capitalized groups to perform a project like this. Now I'm just going to click through a few slides of some previous projects, just to give you a sense of quality and, and how we approach development. Some of these may fit within the same realm that we, you know, are discussing tonight, but just want to give you a flavor of, of what we've done and the size of projects that we've taken, we've taken on. So this project was State Street Station in Wauwautosa, Wisconsin. This was 148 apartments, over 20,000 square feet of retail space in the heart of the village of Wauwautosa, a very small two-acre urban infill site that we, we took on. There's just another shot showing the other end of the retail. Another project here, this was a 70-unit apartment project in downtown Cedarburg. We, we tore down and dilapidated a school building that had not been utilized for about five years by the school district and repurposed it into apartments for, for that downtown area. You can see the exterior there, and then some interior shots as well. Next one is Orchard Hills. So this is what I would call version one of our project that you guys are seeing tonight. You know, we're probably on version three right now with what we're presenting to you guys with, you know, more modern architecture and different uses and things, but this was a 225-unit project over 12 buildings that we built in Oak Creek, Wisconsin, in 2019. You can see here some interior shots of our clubhouse, very high-quality finishes. We spent about 2.5 million dollars on our clubhouse alone. It really provides that additional space for our residents outside of their, just their unit itself, gives them a sense of community, being a, you know, place to be able to invite their families for, you know, Christmas and Thanksgiving, and really gives them an extension of their space. Well, that's a little closer to you guys. This was recently completed in West Endee, Illinois, off of Randall Road, is, Seasons at Randall Road. So this was our first development in the suburbs of Chicago. We started this in 2019. This was 380 units over the course of two phases, the first being 300 units and then an 80-unit expansion immediately following the completion of the initial 300 units that completed in June of this year. It's been basically fully leased since the day we opened. It's been really well-accepted by the community, and it's a, definitely a benefit for them. Okay? So that gives you just a little sense of just kind of our, some of our recent history. We do have a few other projects, as Demir mentioned, in some of the other suburbs that are either under construction, recently completed, or potentially coming as well. So we just completed a project in Romeo Ville of 240 units. We have a 320-unit project in Plainfield, Illinois, that is under construction, slated to start opening its first buildings next year. And then we just started about two weeks ago, a project in North Aurora, off of Orchard Road and 88, of 260 units of, that we're all, we're very confident in our product and the amenities that we provide to the, to those municipalities, and we'd like to do the same here. So just a few people that we work with on a regular basis on these projects. Again, my name's David Farrell. Tony DeRosa and Ashley Poole are on our development team as well. AG Architecture of Ottawa, Wauwautosa, they are our main architecture partner on all of these projects. And then Manhard Consulting, local civil engineer, that you guys have probably seen a few presentations from over the course of the years, is our engineering partner on this. Just a summary of the development stats that Demir went over before. Approximately 25 acres on the multifamily parcel and 3.1 acres on the commercial parcel, and then the proposed zonings that we have for each of the uses. One thing I will note, I can, is that we initially actually started working on this in this area and actually working on the north side of Hops for the, the parcel that Demir had mentioned earlier. And through working with city staff, it was determined that, you know, this whole corridor for the comprehensive plan really is guided towards commercial use, you know, along this whole Randall corridor. And given the access challenges that the southern parcel had from a commercial standpoint, working with city staff, it's the same owner on both sides of the street, so we determined that actually the southern parcel is probably the better option for residential because of those access complications, and then leaving the north parcel more open for a commercial development that, and it has the proper access with the, the light just further north of it, and then also the ability to potentially have a, an access point on Randall north of Hops directly into the, the site. So, just a little bit of history, you know, we've been working on this for probably a little over a year now with the city staff, so, and we're here before you tonight. So, I just wanted to quickly touch on kind of our highest and best use analysis when it comes to this parcel, and you look at all different kinds of uses across the commercial spectrum. And the first one, you know, you, you look at is office. Office demand has significantly declined in the last 10 years for just overall square footage, and that was prior to, you know, anything related to COVID. That was just further accelerated by many decades, really, I think, in that whole trend for remote work. So we didn't, we don't see a, really a great use for that along this corridor. Retail, you know, the Amazon effect and kind of our e-commerce economy now has really made retailers, commercial users, very sensitive to having the best locations and the easiest access into those locations for their consumers to come and, come to their businesses. So, like I just mentioned before, I think the southern parcel had some, some complications with lack of continuity from Randall, and the northern parcel lends itself better for the commercial, so we thought that this southern parcel was better fit for multifamily than big-box commercial, you know, Walmart, that sort of thing, even though there's obviously one of them, but something like that could easily go on a, on a parcel of this size. And then industrial, given that the, you know, industrial is probably the one that, sector that's been growing the most out of the commercial space over the last decade, but this site, the access challenges, as well as it's not quite as close to the arterial freeway system, makes it a complicated one for, you know, a distribution facility, something like that, and so we didn't feel that industrial was a great use for the site either. So then you go to multifamily, and in the Chicago suburbs and, but across the entire country, really, there's been limited multifamily development over the last 30 to 40 years, especially over the last 10, but really giving communities an, an open array of different housing options is key, and a lot of communities have seen pent-up demand but a lack of housing options for their, for their residents, which has led to, you know, some people going to other communities just to find what they can't find in, in your community, perhaps. So, it's very compatible with single-family that kind of surrounds, not really surrounds this site, but, but it's adjacent to. And these buildings really read like single-family homes in the two-story architecture that we're proposing, rather than a three- or four-story common corridor, kind of typical apartment building that has been built over the last 10 to 15 years. It also meets the main criteria that we have with being close to retail conveniences, main arterial roadway and Randall Road, is probably the most well-traveled corridor in, in Kane County, and very good access to jobs as well. Like I said before, our market research has shown that, you know, there's very pent-up demand for this type of housing product. We provide, we try to provide top first-class finishes in these communities that are very similar to, or if not exceed, some single-family homes that are either existing or even built brand-new, that are being built in communities. And these are really for people that are looking to stay in the community. Sometimes it's someone needs to sell, you know, they'd like to sell their single-family home and simplify their life a little bit. They can still stay in the community that they've built, you know, their life in and have roots in, and they can simply turn a key and we, you know, have a seamless lifestyle compared to the maintenance of a single-family home and things like that. A lot of our residents are people that are choosing to rent, not having to rent, and I think that's probably one of the biggest misconceptions about multifamily in today's day and age, is that, you know, the stigma has been, you only rent because you can't afford a house, right? That's kind of just the general sense of multifamily over the last 25 years, but really, these are people that are choosing to rent versus being forced to rent. We cater to all demographics, really, you know, our, our studio units, all the way up to our three-bedroom units and every unit in between, gives a lot of people a very wide array of unit types that are available to them, that can feed, that can fit their needs appropriately. And, you know, we have, our demographic is usually higher per, like on an annual income basis than the municipalities that we're in, so that I think really shows to us that, you know, we're building a product that is very well-desired in the communities that we build in, and we are, we have really a wide array of employment bases that we, we cater to. You know, it's healthcare, finance, real estate, police and fire, education, service industries, and, and anywhere in between. Our monthly rent ranges will be about 1,400 a month on the low end to 2,700 a month for that large three-bedroom unit that I mentioned. And like I said, that kind of caters to everybody's budget as well as... And like I said, that kind of caters to everybody's budget as well as what they need in their unit for their living style. As Demir mentioned before, each of our units have direct entrances. We really have seen that be a very important requirement of a lot of our residents is that they like the fact that they have their own front door. These really read like townhouses versus that three and four-story corridor building, get in an underground parking, go up your, you know, in an elevator to your unit. It's kind of the very typical style. But this, especially on the onset of COVID, this has really been a very popular living style for our residents. A lot of our amenities, you know, we have attached and detached garages for some of our units. We have very high-quality construction. We believe in spending more per unit than what our, I would say our competition typically does in order to provide things like higher sound attenuation between units so that, you know, you can't hear your neighbors. We pride ourselves in putting really high-quality materials in, not because it allows for length of life, not only for, you know, us on a management side of things, but also just gives the residents higher quality materials and finishes within their units. You know, we have quartz countertops, stainless steel appliance package that really can't be beat in the marketplace. Full unit, inside, in-unit full-size washer and dryers, things like that that really residents are looking to have in their units in today's market. And then I mentioned, you know, our community amenities are top-notch with our clubhouse pool. And one thing to note is that we are, we don't third-party manage. We own and manage everything ourselves. So we're in-house and we really believe that that gives us the ability to serve our residents at the best, the best that we can versus having a third-party management company take care of our assets for us. So I think Demir kind of flashed some of these renderings on the screen already for you, but we can just quickly kind of click through these. As Demir mentioned, very high-end architecture. We try to not bring the kind of same vanilla-style architecture to, that maybe you've seen in other communities over the past five to 10 years. Another shot of our clubhouse and pool. Interior shots of our clubhouse. We have, as I mentioned before, we have a few kind of gathering areas in the clubhouse that residents can reserve for their own parties, baby showers, you know, really allow for large gatherings and community events as well. We pride ourselves on having monthly events for our residents to, so everyone can get to know one another and really have a sense of community in our developments. Some shots of what you could expect on the interior finish side of things in our units. And then some typical floor plans. Just, this is the same site plan that Demir went through, so I don't know if we need to touch on that anymore. And then just a few closing thoughts on project benefits here. So we believe that this is a product that is very high demand in Elgin and provides an ample amount of green space and openness throughout the development. The current tax bill is $2,900 a year. After post-development, this would be north of $1 million per year in property taxes. So probably one of the larger property tax bills that Elgin will see in the community. And then the, really the biggest impact, and I think this is, can help be a catalyst to future development for, on the commercial side of things along this corridor, is the impact of the additional consumer spending that we see time and time again from our residents that they spend a lot of their income in the community that they live. So this could have two-plus million dollars of annual spending from those residents at the local businesses. And with that, I will take any questions you guys have.
We appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, we'll start on my left. Commissioner Awalde, questions for the team?
Westundy, it's fully complete?
It is.
And is there a commercial property there?
There is, yes. We have approximately a two-acre parcel just south of the clubhouse along Randall. That we've been marketing for starting the project. That parcel specifically has more access challenges than anything that this project has. I think we didn't see any personal development happen throughout from when we started that in 2019, so. But it was a requirement of Westundy to have some commercial corridor along Randall and just give them the commercial corridor that Randall is.
I saw a tandem garage in one of those pictures. Is there some units that have two garage spaces tandem?
There are four units of.
Each 20 unit building has eight units that have an attached garage. Four of the units have tandem garages. The larger three-bedrooms and two-bedroom units have two-car deep garage attached to them. So a total of 12 indoor parking spaces for, within those eight garages.
And the Seasons in Westundy, they're a replica?
I would say the architecture here is, this, like I said, kind of our third iteration, so to speak, with some updated architecture. We worked with city staff to increase a lot of the masonry details and things on this project even prior to you guys seeing it. So similar in terms of floor plan layouts, but a very different look from an architecture perspective.
Thank you for a thorough presentation.
Commissioner Jones, you're up.
Great presentation, thank you. I guess I'm just curious, because this is kind of a shift in housing, right? And you would know better than me, why apartments versus like condos or townhomes or owner-occupied developments?
Condos have been a very tricky thing to get financed since 2008. The valuation swings between market pricing and cost of construction is something that's very, it's not easy to predict. And it also, so banks really aren't financing new condo deals, maybe on a very, very small scale. You know, duplex-type development, maybe 16 units or something like that, you know, that are, the market demand just isn't there as, as high. And typically, I think you see that rents compared to, you know, the cost to own a similar condo is going to be cheaper from a monthly perspective than, than owning. So that's kind of why we really haven't seen condo development and ownership come back yet. It's just.
And then I, you guys, I did look at your website. You guys have a lot of great history in doing these types of development. What would you say the retention looks like? I was happy to hear that you don't do third-party property management. In your other spaces in your units, what does the retention look like? Like how long is the average?
Yeah, great question. So the national average for apartments in terms of year-over-year retention is about 40%. So, you know, out of 100 units, 40 will leave every year on the average. We see lower, or I'd say higher retention than that in our developments because of the quality that we put in and the features that we provide for them, along with, I think, our onsite management is top-notch and can compete with anybody in the business. So we see about 30% on average, you know, going in and out. And that's due to maybe there's a family that's, you know, building a new home in the, in the subdivision that, you know, you guys saw earlier this evening and they're just, they want to be in the community, they're just waiting for their home to be built. Maybe they only need to be there for a year. But then we also have residents that sign a lease and never leave. So it's kind of a, different for everybody, but I would say that we definitely do see a lower than, or higher than average retention than the national average.
And then just overall, you know, historically, non-owner-occupied units, it sounds like you're looking at a different kind of demographic, but they tend to be not cared for in the same manner as a owner-occupied unit. What do you see and you, how do you address that in your other communities?
Are you talking about like interior, like not taking care of an interior of a unit or, or exterior?
To not have that same pride of ownership and care and.
I would say that anybody tries to strive, you know, generally speaking, you know, I think people try to strive to maintain a quality of life that they want to, they want to provide for themselves. You know, sometimes people don't take care of single-family homes and they turn into, you know, homes that have not been maintained for, for a lot of years. Our management company does a great job of, you know, maintaining the exteriors of all these buildings. We have, you know, I think I probably have three, maybe even four, full-time maintenance staff and groundskeepers and things, along with three or four full-time leasing people, property manager, you know, leasing agents that take care of our properties because we, we won't be able to attract new residents if, you know, everything kind of goes by the wayside, you know, quickly. So we take a real pride in maintaining our projects inside and out.
Thank you, thank you for all the information.
Commissioner McGowan.
A few questions. Are these gross leases, I imagine?
Well, so the monthly rent would be, if you want to use the commercial terms, I guess it would be net because, you know, the resident is paying for their gas, electric, communications, you know, whatever internet service they provide. And then separately, they'd pay for a small fee for trash pickup. So it would be, I guess, a net lease in that perspective, but.
One-year term?
We do offer some short-term rentals. It's very small, but usually no less than six months. Our average term is one year, but we do have people that come to us and say, can I rent for 24 months? So they have the security that, you know, they don't need to think about where they're living for a little while.
How much is the security deposit?
Depending on credit and background check and things like that, that we do a very thorough job of vetting all of our residents, it can range from about $500 to potentially one-month rent.
A pet's allowance?
Yes.
What percentage of your projects, completed projects, do you still own after, say, seven
Trying to think of the best way to answer this. We always build our projects so that long-term they're viable and are very strong in terms of build quality and rent projection and things like that. Our average, can't remember the statistic, but I think our average hold right now across our entire portfolio is about 14 years. And then, you know, we have projects in our portfolio that we were just recently completed that really are two years into that, but then also we have projects that we've owned for 30-plus years since our inception. So.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, yeah. I just have a couple of questions and you reviewed kind of partly, but I'm assuming that because of that new intersection and I'm sure you, you know, there's a lot of issues with Hops and Randall. Has there been a, was a traffic study commissioned?
We have not performed a traffic study as of yet. That was something that I would surmise that the city staff would require of us to do as part of the final engineering. However, we have had, you know, multiple discussions with King County as relates to that intersection, being able, we've tailored our subdivision to fit within the existing Hops for now and then, you know, ultimately can fit within the new, newly-built Hops once King County finishes their project. So, but as Demir said, I think, you know, the standards that a traffic engineer would look at for this project and given its adjacency to Randall Road, the vast, vast majority of traffic is just, is going to be going right out of the development and, and going up, you know, north or south along Randall to go wherever they need to go. And very little traffic is going to end up going west.
Yeah, thank you. And, I mean, the reason I'm asking is, you know, I mean, it's going to be a nice development, but it is going to add traffic. And, you know, it's understandable that the city wants more developments. It equates to more tax dollars, but it also increases traffic in the area. And so that's the reason I asked about the traffic study and how it's going to impact the light times, on and off, right-hand turn, left-hand turn, all that kind of stuff.
Right. I would say that this type of development is much less impactful than what ultimately maybe the comprehensive plan is actually looking for for this parcel, you know, with the, the commercial corridor that Randall is. If you looked at putting a big box here, the traffic generation and a couple of outlets, let's say, traffic generation for that would be many times more than what ours is going to be on an average, you know, trip generation perspective, especially with the advent of home from, you know, working from home too. I mean, not everyone's going to the office anymore, so.
Thank you. And then my second question or comment is, I'm assuming that this will have an impact on the local school district. Do you know if there's enough capacity at Outer Creek for, to sustain possibly more kids going to school?
We haven't heard of any concerns from the school district of the, they, I think, actually submitted a, what was that, a petition today for, you know, we're working with them on a stormwater management thing along our west property line with them that we will work through, through final engineering, but they're supportive of the project. And typically, we don't see a lot of school-age kids generated out of a development like this. Usually, across our entire portfolio, usually we see about six to eight school-age kids per hundred units. So you're talking, you know, for this size project, you're talking on the low end, 15, maybe up to 25, you know, school-age kids that, and the majority of them are already, are still, are in the district existing. And these are, you know, people that have moved for various reasons to our development. We typically don't see a lot of influx in, of new attendees to the school district.
And lastly, you gave us a range of rents. And that, it's got to obviously equate to a range in, I guess, salary to be able to afford to live in these units. Do you pick that salary range?
Right. So typically, let me do some rough math here for you. Typically, when we, when we look to, for ranges of salaries that you kind of need to live comfortably with a rental rate, it's about 30% of your gross pay is where it feels comfortable, right? So for, on the low end at 1,400, you're talking about someone who's making about $55,000 a year, you know, between the household that's living there, whether it's a single or a double-occupied unit. And then similarly, on the high end, you're about just over $100,000 a year. So, in household income, that goes up to the three-bedroom unit that I mentioned before that, you know, we typically on that unit, we see, you know, people have downsized from a 3,000-square-foot home to that 1,700-square-foot unit. It just simplifies their life. They still have enough room for kids to come stay if they want, you know, for the weekend, that kind of thing.
That's all I have, thank you.
Commissioner Waldemar.
Just confirming, you said that the Westundy location was fully leased now. Comparatively, I know there's a slide, how big is that compared to the proposed development here?
So that one was 380 units total on about 34 acres. So similar density, just a little bit larger.
All right, so at least one of my questions was taken. The other one was, we did receive a response form from, from the school district. Are you aware of this?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess just, I'll just read this here. The district has concerns about the proposed plans in regards to the stormwater easement. So can you comment on that, please?
That's what I kind of briefly mentioned before. We're working with them on, on the management of our stormwater along our property line. It's something that will work, we're ironing out through the final engineering details. We're not to that point yet. We reached out to them several months ago just as a courtesy and knowing that we would need to work with them ahead of this development application coming. But I think we will figure out something with them. I have no doubt in that, so.
That's fine, I appreciate it. If you missed, if you said it before, I apologize if I missed it. Just wanted to bring it to the light for the sake of discovery, so.
Yep.
All right. I didn't have any additional questions for you?
Okay.
So was your companion wants to make any comments?
No. Cade was here from Manhard, just to answer any technical engineering questions if you guys had any. So I think we're, we're good.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you.
All right, so at this point in time, we'll open this petition up to public comment. We'll start with the names on the signing sheet. If I get your name wrong, I apologize. I'm starting with Margaret Myers.
Good evening and thank you. That was a wonderful presentation. As a member of the community, I live along Hops Road and it has been brought up about the density of this project. It's a very ambitious project. My big concern has already been addressed is the density of this project. The amount of traffic that is going to be coming out onto Hops Road goes right along outer school. That, do you know what the speed limit is along Hops Road? along Hops Road on any given school day? Are you aware of what that speed limit is?
Ma'am, well, just go ahead and...
Well, my question is, it's 25 miles per hour. You've indicated that there's a very small percentage of the people that are going to inhabit the apartments that are going to be there. There are going to be a lot of traffic going down that road. Seven days a week. On five of it, when children are present, from the time they start school to the time they're out of school, it'll be 25 miles per hour. You have a lot of adults. I've witnessed it myself in my, my community that do not adhere to that speed limit. I'm concerned for the safety of the children in that community. I'm also wondering how they're going to, if they are inhabiting those apartments, going to get to school? Are they going to walk? Are they going to be bused? Just a question. Um, and I guess another question was, you know, what age group are you trying to target? You say that you have people that don't want to, you know, take care of a home, but, um, does this area really, you know, you're from Milwaukee. I don't know what your demographics are as for what people make, what they're able to spend. But living in this area, this, this community that we live in, are they really going to want to spend 14 to $2,700 a month? You're coming in with a beautiful development, beautiful, state-of-the-art. I mean, it's beautiful. But realistically, who are you targeting? And if it's starting out at that, rents usually don't go down over time, they go up. So, you know, I guess I'm asking, where is the demand coming for such a beautiful high-end? And what are, what are they going to be attracted to? There is wonderful shopping, but we're not like downtown Geneva or Patavia or some of the beautiful communities that you've, you know, built around. So what is the draw to this area? We're very residential. There have been people here for many, many years and they're very concerned about, again, the density of this project, what Hops Road is going to become like because people who come to shop along Randall will oftentimes not even want to go to Randall, but take all the back streets such as Stevens or McDonald and come out to Hops Road just to stay away from Randall Road. So if this is all going to dump onto Hops Road, how are you prepared or, or is this project going to be prepared to handle that? I understand you're going to widen and you're going to, you know, make provisions, but it's a lot of traffic. It's a lot of people and, and a very small area. So, um, yeah, that, that's just my big concern, the traffic and density.
We appreciate it, ma'am. Before you leave, if it could get your, your address, please. I should say for anyone again tonight who's going to come up and speak, give us your name and address and...
I apologize. My name is Margaret Myers. I live at 8N415 Shady Lane. Uh, that is off of Hops Road. I haven't traveled there in probably over six months. Traffic backs up during school hours when the children are out of school, which is wonderful. That's keeping them safe. I just take the back roads. Then I find myself landlocked at, uh, the corner of Stevens and McDonald because it's a four-way stop and people are traveling in the back roads, doing the same thing that I am. So it's going to dump a lot of traffic in a lot of the back roads.
Appreciate your, your thoughts tonight. Um, for the petitioner team, if there are questions which may be worth, um, coming back to, we'll give you the opportunity, but thus far what I've heard has been in your, uh, presentation. All right. Uh, moving on, Janet Yakley?
Hi. I'm Janet Yakel, 8N605 Shady Lane, and I've been a 43-year resident of West Cottas Estates, uh, which includes Shady Lane. We raised all our four children. I'm a retired U-46 teacher. Uh, we spent a great deal of our life on Shady Lane and trust me, Hops Road has changed. My biggest, biggest concern is the traffic. This exits, I'm figuring are approximately 1,500 feet away from the intersection of Hops and Randall. Close distance for the exits from the apartment building and the townhomes. I'm figuring there could be upwards of, I'm doing this conservatively, 500 cars leaving those places every day. And I'm talking about the townhomes and the apartments. And where anyone, and if you haven't been out there and you don't understand the distance from Randall Road to where the exits are going to be for these two developments, you need to make a trip. You, you can't see it on this. This apartments, and I think they're beautiful. I'd move into probably one in five years if it weren't where it is. I, they're gorgeous.
What planning?
I love them. But I just worry about the traffic. And if you think all those cars are going to go to Randall Road, you are sadly mistaken. They are going to learn very quickly, as we have learned, you stay away from Randall Road. We take all the back roads. And I hope somebody's equipped to put lights at Stevenson and Hops because you're going to need it. Or you're going to go down a little bit farther as I do when I'm going west and you're going to take Nolan over to Bo's. And almost already, I leave at 6:45 to go take care of my grandchildren and I have to wait several minutes sometimes to get onto Bo's going west. You are burdening Bo's, Hops, and McDonald with what you're proposing here. It, there, it's, I can't even imagine. It's a nightmare now and we're going to turn it into a horror story? This is, uh, mind-boggling to me. And it, you only need to take a trip to see it. And whatever the reason, and I understand development, I understand taxes, but I don't understand putting such a burden on all the people that live on Hops and the people that are coming to Hops. So, that's my point. Thank you.
Appreciate your thoughts. Uh, next item or next name on the list is, uh, Robert Scherf.
My name, my name is Robert Scherf, uh, 8N365 Shady Lane. Um, I have, I was born in Elgin and I've lived here my entire life. And I've lived in my own home on Shady Lane for 54 years. And I've seen the impact of development on Randall Road. And I, as well as the other two people that have spoken, avoid Randall Road at all costs. Now, the proposed changes stated to Hops Road and Randall, I would submit to you are needed right now, let alone after an improvement of 280 units. If you figure that out, that's 560-some people in that area, times two per additional cars, plus the development on the north side of, of Hops Road. I, I don't see how it's going to work. Let's face it, Hops Road is Hops Road. It's a two-road road and it goes only to the other two-lane roads. If you go on Randall, yes, you can go north on Randall and south on Randall. I believe you, you probably take your life in your own hands, quite frankly. Uh, have any of you commissioners been in this area? You have? Yeah. I, I understand they're, they're considering a bridge across the railroad tracks. Probably a good idea, not sure. I don't know where it would start and I don't know where it would end. If it comes across the tracks, it probably would stop at Guyer Road, which is by the Coles. And there's a stop and go like there. So I don't know how that's going to work. I've got, that's yet to be worked out. So has there been an impact study on, on the traffic evaluation in the area?
Sir, uh, we're, we're going to just say, go ahead and, and continue, continue, make your points.
Okay. Because, because everything that's happening, you are proposing to add more people than probably live in the area right now. You're proposing the unit to the north, which I believe is what, 700 and some odd people? You're proposing adding over 500 people on this particular item, put all those people together, and I don't think you've got the density that now exists currently without changing any roads. The improvements proposed on Hops Road are needed tomorrow. The improvements on Randall Road are needed yesterday. So just because, uh, the presentation from the developer, I think, is tremendous, but there's a reason they're doing this and that's because it's all about money. Now, I have an interesting question and that is, everyone I've talked to who might possibly be for or in opposition to the proposal, they say, why go to this meeting? It's already a done deal. So where's the concept of the proposals for changes like this considered a done deal when we're just now talking about it? And yet the general consensus of people in the area is, I'm not going to oppose it. I don't like it, but it's a done deal. So I think we're here in an effort to tell you that there is an issue and the proposal is, uh, startling, I would say, but I don't think it's in the best interest of the people in the current area. And that's my opinion. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I'll, I'll just throw in one, one note here. Um, I don't know how long I've been chair, but I've been on this commission and its predecessor, uh, for coming up on 15 years now. And I can tell you that this commission and its predecessor has never been a done deal kind of thing. So we appreciate you coming, uh, tonight. Um, if you review this meeting or past meetings, you'll see quite often that there's, uh, split votes or things get turned down. So we, although we're volunteers, uh, we work our tail off up here and...
I bet you do. I, I appreciate that.
There's no done deal meeting. So I'm thankful that everyone's here in the, in the audience tonight.
I, I say, I'm born and raised in Elgin. I've lived in my home for 54 years. So I, I know a little bit about the area. And the proposal is, is tragic as far as traffic flow. Thank you.
Appreciate you coming.
You have.
So I've exhausted the, uh, signing sheet, but I know there's a few more people here this evening. Uh, I don't think everyone has sworn in, but still want to give that opportunity. If you do want to speak and do want to be sworn in, now is your opportunity. All right. I'm going to start at the front and work my way back. So, uh, do both of you need to be sworn in?
Yes.
All right. Anyone else? Anyone else?
I'm done.
All right. Uh, again, please face the court reporter. You can, you, yeah, and, um, take the oath.
Cindy Strom.
All right. We'll start here in the front. Again, name, address, and tell us your thoughts, please.
Hi. My name is Cindy Strom. I live at 8N433 Shady Lane. I wasn't planning on talking, but I was very moved by what this gentleman had to say. Um, we moved to unincorporated Elgin for a reason. We have property. We have space. We have great neighbors. Um, the thought of all this traffic congestion coming into an area that we thought was going to be quiet and, and, um, you know, we could have moved to St. Charles or, or Geneva. We wanted land. We wanted space and that's what we have. And we take a lot of pride in our, in our home and in our neighborhood and the thought of traffic and people going around. I do the same thing. Everybody goes around and it's just going to create, I, I just have to second what everyone has already said about the traffic. I think it's going to change the whole, the whole sense of community and what it is we want to experience. There's Otter Creek, uh, there's a, there's, um, you know, a walking trail and it's just, it's idyllic. And this, this project is going to change that. And it is beautiful and the finishes are awesome and all that stuff. I think the sign is hideous. Um, so anyways, I just had to say that. So thanks.
Appreciate you coming up. All right. Believe, sir, you may be last but not least.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Ed Hayes, H-A-Y-E-S. Um, I do not live on Shady Lane. I live at, uh, 1440 Naughty Pine Drive, which is actually directly east of the project. It's, my backyard actually looks at that farmhouse right now. That's part of why I moved where I did. I had a farmhouse across the street from me. Um, and this is going to impact traffic no matter what happens, you know? Because here's, here's what happens. Nobody wants to be on Randall. We all know. That, that intersection is a death trap. It's been there, I've been there 22 years now. It's been a death trap since we moved in and we've heard for 22 years they're going to fix that intersection. Well, it still hasn't happened. So, and it's no guarantee it's ever going to happen. Yes, I know they're working on it, but that could take five, 10 years. Who knows what's going to happen with funds. Um, but what happens is people come down Lake Street, they turn on McLean, they take Bo's, they take, they take, uh, Hops or Spring in South Elgin, and then they go west. And it takes sometimes 10, 15 minutes for me to turn out of my subdivision in the afternoon because so many people are cutting to avoid Randall to get west. Then they, or they cut through our neighborhood, which has Umdin Stock on it, which can get down to McDonald's or Stern's. So they just, they just keep coming and coming and coming. There needs to be some kind of traffic study done on this because, uh, you know, 600-some parking spots, which means 600-some cars, they're going to move, especially on weekends when kids are out playing or whatever. It's, it's going to impact the whole area. Whether it be west of Randall, it's going to impact east of Randall also. That's what I have to say.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Just make sure no one else is sworn in, but just going once, going twice. All right. We will close the public hearing portion of this petition. I think now as a commission, we look back to you. Demir, so please tell us any additional thoughts that you may have.
Uh, I don't think staff has anything else to add. Again, nothing that we haven't thought about in advance and speaking.
Lights off.
We've, we've been having challenges with the, uh, sound system. So I'll try to speak up. So staff does not have any, anything additional to add. Again, everything that we heard tonight is everything anticipated we're going to hear. Uh, the roads are built for traffic. Uh, people going down Route 20, coming down south of McLean, taking roads at Hops, that's what they're supposed to do. Uh, this is a 32-acre site that's on the southwest corner of Randall Hops. Anybody that thought it's going to remain vacant forever, uh, may not, you know, looking to the comprehensive plan and what the city vision is for the entire Randall report. As the, as the activated commercial development on this site is challenging, uh, and that's why it's more appropriate that it's a multifamily development. That multifamily development generates less traffic than a commercial development that, uh, otherwise may go generally by right. Uh, so, so those are things to consider. Hops Road currently carries, I believe, about 3,200 vehicles per day. This development and the development to the north, the townhomes, will probably double that amount of traffic on a daily basis. That, that is a fact. Uh, but the road has that capacity and they will widen the road to accommodate the left-turn lane so that vehicles making a left turn into this development will not obstruct traffic traveling westbound. Similarly, the townhome development that are north will, will be doing a designated right-turn lane, I believe, uh, that would, uh, if it's warranted, uh, that would then allow for that traffic to get out of the way and then for, for westbound traffic to go further. So the intersection improvements that are, that KDOT is doing are definitely coming. Uh, yes, the question is when, but we anticipate within two to three years. Um, so this, you know, on, on surface, this is a perfect development for the site. And, yes, it will increase traffic, but every type of development increases traffic. So staff does not have any additional conditions. We, we do still believe that the standards for approval of development are met and therefore staff recommends approval.
All right. Appreciate that. Uh, so then at this point in time, the chair will entertain a motion for petitions 36-22, 37-22, and 38-22.
May I ask a question?
Yes. Uh, we need discussion. We, we can do that.
Uh, yeah. So I was just, uh, I, I wasn't really sure, uh, that I understood the answer when it...
Yes, we need discussion, we can do that.
Yeah, so I was just, I wasn't really sure that I understood the answer when it came to the traffic study. And maybe I didn't catch that, it's my mistake, but is that, maybe this is directed to Demir.
Sure.
Is that, is that coming, Demir? Is that a prerequisite or is it just not required?
Well, it is, it's not a hard rule that certain developments require or do not require. In this particular development, staff determined that it's not necessary. In our belief, what the study would have shown is that the majority of the traffic will be going eastbound here, and majority of the traffic will be coming from the east, from Randall Road. And the only way to then improve Hops Road is to add the center turn lane to match the cross-section of that roadway in front of the elementary school to the west, and that's what they're doing. So at this point, there was, there was nothing else that the traffic study would have shown us that we would need to evaluate this development, so we simply did not require for this development.
And that's the city of Elgin did not require?
Correct.
Do you know if Kane County will require it?
They will not because they are not proposing an access in Randall Road.
Thank you.
All right, in the interest of fairness, I'll go through the commission. Commissioner Wilderwood, do you have any questions or discussion?
No questions.
Commissioner McGala.
Yeah, I just think it's too dense, and I think that the departures, some of the departures are just too gray given the site characteristics and the proximity of the intersectional hubs and Randall.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Abuali?
I guess it's for you guys, it's just... I understand it's not a requirement. Have you considered doing a traffic study, or that hasn't really come up?
It was not...
Yeah, if you're gonna testify, apologies, you have to come back, go. This is not the typical procedure, I think, at this point, but we'll go ahead and do this for discovery.
So as Demir stated, you know, it was not a requirement from city staff and engineering to evaluate this project. It's not required on every project that we do. Some of them they are, some of them they aren't. It's kind of a call by the municipality on how they view things, so just think about that.
Thank you. All right, appreciate that.
I don't have a comment.
Okay.
This is another example, and I've said this before, where I really think, you know, this commission can really serve to, you know, have almost like a two-level approval process where we're given the petition and we're offered a chance to comment on it, kind of a workshop-type session. And then after that, you know, they come back with the changes, the petition, or the developer comes back with the changes, and then we kind of vote up or down on that petition. So I really think a two-stage approval process, especially for these large petitions, makes a lot of sense. You know, to ask us to vote up or down is just not really efficient. I've gone on record since before. I think it's an appropriate time for me to reiterate my position, especially on a petition like this.
All right, and reminding...
I just want to add that I forgot to mention, again, my final statement is that, again, this is a request for preliminary plat open. So this project would have to come back in front of the commission with final plat approval. Project, you know, by the city council, and the city council approves the annexation of the property. Then they would have to come back, submit a new application, they would have to, by the planning and zoning commission, with final plat approval.
Appreciate that, and I was gonna say that I think perhaps some of what I'm hearing also is probably considered better under other business versus this petition-specific comment, so we don't burden the petition with procedural things. And I think, too, just generally hearing a lot of questions that may fall outside of our purview, especially as was discussed where we are in the consideration of this petition. So we'll just move on from that now and probably bring it up in item G. So again, at this point in time, the chair will entertain a motion for these petitions.
All right, on the motion, I move that we reject petition thirty-six dash twenty-two, thirty-seven dash twenty-two, and thirty-eight dash twenty-two.
Second.
Staff, please call the roll. And remembering for those on the commission that a yes means this petition is denied and a no means the petition is approved. Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner McGala?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Abuali?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Wilderwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
No.
The, the motion fails for the lack of majority vote, so it's three in favor and three against of the, of the motion. So the commission may consider making another motion or just leave it as is.
I would say that if I'm hearing consideration of the traffic study being an important part of this, the commission can add conditions or recommendations for such an item to be added before this should move forward to city council. So again, just procedurally, since that motion has failed, as Demir has enumerated the options, the chair would entertain a motion for this petition, for these petitions.
But it's not required.
But not required, thank you, thank you.
I do move to recommend that city council approve petition thirty-six twenty-two, thirty-seven twenty-two, and thirty-eight twenty-two with the recommendation of a traffic study. I do think some of Demir's comments were very accurate. They did a lot of work on this, and I think it would satisfy everybody involved to do a traffic study.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Abuali?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilderwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner McGala?
No.
Commissioner, Chairman Cox?
Yes.
This motion is approved five to one. It includes that additional condition that the applicant provided, traffic study. Just to clarify, this is prior to the project being scheduled for city council, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, gentlemen, that'll be our recommendation to city council. As before, continue working with Demir.
Thank you.
Appreciate everyone coming tonight. It's good to see the council chambers have so many people in it. We do appreciate every one of you. All right, moving on to item G for other business. Those of you on the commission, I know, as I mentioned, Commissioner McGala, I do appreciate your perspective, certainly. And now, to me, is an opportunity for those on the commission to bring up other business. I'll start on my left. Commissioner Abuali, anything for other business?
No, thanks.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank staff for getting the packets out to us on Wednesday last week. We're running out of weather, and so to have those extra few hours on the weekend and not have to read a five-hundred-page packet was much appreciated. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner McGala.
I would second that. Kudos to staff. And then, again, just to reiterate, you know, I think certain petitions could benefit from a workshop session before we vote up or down. Thank you.
I will say that as an architect, presenting in front of other communities, what you're saying is something I'm very familiar with. So I'm sure staff will take that under consideration. Commissioner Lopez?
So I'd have to say that thank you for a third time because that is very helpful, Demir. Hint, hint.
What's that?
Getting also packets a little bit earlier. So we really appreciate it. I know it puts a burden on your office, so appreciate it.
Yes.
And then, I guess the, the one thing I may, a comment I may add maybe for all of us is the way that I understand is, you know, these statutes and zoning requirements are there in place, and if a project, and this is a question, maybe a comment, if a project meets those, then it's put on our desk as I recommended by staff. And so to me, maybe, maybe a refresher, maybe you can email us the... I know, I've read it, the comprehensive plan, so we understand. And maybe as a refresher, what isn't, what isn't allowed before, and as far as development in the city of Elgin? That would be appreciated, and maybe it's a reminder to all of us. Thank you.
Wasn't sure if you were gonna say something or...
I'm thinking about it, but I'll skip.
We'll come back to you, since this is thoughts from the commission. Commissioner Wilderwood?
No questions, agree with, it's been brought to me about a workshopping session. So I agree with the concept, but also want to make sure that we allow, you know, have that allowance for... You know, staff does a lot of that free work, you know, too, with the, they have apps, so. But no other questions.
All right, my only other thought, as I kind of mentioned, was helping the commission stay within the questions that actually relate to zoning and planning. So if you can maybe also help us to kind of understand where our purview actually lies so we can ask pertinent questions of the petitioner team, and also appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, I'll certainly do some research and try to provide some refresher materials on the roles and, I should say, the role of, and powers and duties of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I am familiar with a format that some cities have for their planning and zoning commissions where they have a subcommittee, where that subcommittee essentially functions as a, you know, workshop committee that reviews certain matters before that matter is then moved on to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Something to consider is that, that that's gonna add substantial amount of time to the development process. We take great pride in being able to tell applicants that, once we have a development application, within sixty to ninety days, you're gonna go through the process. And not many communities can say that. Now, what you heard tonight is that the applicant said they've been working on this for a year, and that is, that is probably accurate. And that just shows you how long, how much work is involved behind the scenes to get to a project that we as staff can support. At the end of the day, the number of units on this project and many others is dictated by market and what they have to build to make it profitable. We're no experts in that, and very few developers will share their performance. But at the end of the day, our job is to make the project as best as possible for the whole community, not the city of Elgin as an organization because of taxes, but for the whole community, including residents and non-residents, including existing businesses and potential businesses. And then, you know, the density number, at the end of the day, they could've had more units like they set up in West Dundee or less. If the project has the same layout, they could've had, you know, ten larger units instead of twenty units in each building, but the market doesn't support them. They found the sort of, clearly, they've been doing this in many communities across, and they know what works. So we're not in a position to tell them, you know, shave off thirty, forty units so that you're closer to the maximum density that is allowed by zoning ordinance when the comprehensive plan allows significantly more. So we felt very comfortable with the number of units on this. Again, the traffic will be increased for any type of development, and so we are more than happy to get the Planning and Zoning Commission involved in the initial review of these projects through maybe some sort of a subcommittee, and we can certainly look at other options, and we'd be more than happy to do that. But not sure how the council is gonna look at that and what they really want to do in terms of the approval process for these projects, so.
And then also, I think you've, when you commented in the past on this, there also is kind of a gray area determining which project would have to go through that and which projects would be able to bypass that.
What's that, the review by the commission or...
Yes, like a pre-read, effectively.
That will have to be formalized in some shape or form through rules of the Planning and Zoning Commission or perhaps even through a formal ordinance adopted by the city council that establishes another subcommittee or that allows the Planning and Zoning Commission to form its own subcommittees as they choose, as they wish. So we'd have to do some research and figure out the rules on that, and we can certainly provide that information.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on, the agenda of public comment. Now is the opportunity, for those of you in the audience who would like to comment on proceedings here tonight, not anything related to the petitions, now is your opportunity. If you're gonna speak, ma'am, I gotta... You're gonna have to. But again, this cannot be anything related to the, any petitions that's been discussed tonight. All right, thank you.
No, I was just going to, my name is Margaret Myers. I live at eight N, four one five Shady Lane. No, I just wanted to comment that this is my first-ever meeting. So I am very grateful that we live in a country where we're able to speak and say what's on our mind and be both ends receptive. I think because we're emotionally charged over the events this evening, we tend to get a little emotionally involved. We have, and as you have all indicated, there's been a lot of behind-the-scenes work that has been done in this project. We're just speaking as residents, so, but again, so thankful to live in a country where we are able to speak freely and all leave this evening as friends and just understand we are all in this together. We're just trying to get through the end of the day the best way we know how. So thank you, thank you very much.
Well said. Anyone else? All right, appreciate the positive sentiment. All right, then, moving on, item I, summary of pending development applications. We look back to you again, Demir.
That townhouse development that was proposed on the north side of Hops, just across the street from this, is scheduled for the public hearing of the city council and review by the city council next week. That will be October twelfth, in addition to the other projects that were reviewed by the commission last month, and then the annexation of the site for Thornton's Gas Station that will most likely be scheduled at the second meeting in October on the twenty-sixth. Next month, we'll have another busy meeting. We may have a residential development where we strongly encourage, as we always do, that these larger developments hold neighborhood meetings. And that particular developer did that, and so they can certainly speak to that and how it turned out and what changes it brought on the project. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions. We're getting close to the end of the year, so we'll probably be having a schedule for 2023 meeting scheduled for you, probably the next meeting, so just looking towards that.
Well, we're getting close to the end of the year and also the end of the evening, so the next item... Karen, you have a question for staff?
Yeah, just real quick, the summary of pending development, it was brought up tonight about when these things, I know you get the mailing notices when things are coming. Is that pending, we get that on a weekly basis, but is that available to the community of pending development items? Similar to that? If anybody wanted to ever see that, would that be something they could reach out to the rear office?
Yeah, it's, I believe it is posted as part of the Planning and Zoning Commission back at every month, at the end of each month, so that would be the one place that it's posted. Not a lot of changes between month to month, so that's one place. Obviously, anybody can contact staff, we can provide it, and then...
That's perfect. But that's available, and it lists, there'd be some, some of those, just to the people who are still here. It lists some things that may be on there for months, so if there's other areas that you're... I look at it even prior to this, just to see what was going on around me or what was, you know, that kind of thing. So that's out there to take a peek at if you ever did.
All right, again, in the interest of fairness, anyone else? Any discussion on the summary pending development applications?
No, you want to be fair?
Always. I appreciate you keeping me accountable. All right, if not, we'll move on to item J, adjournment. Is there a motion and a second?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Abuali?
Yes.
Commissioner McGala?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilderwood?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thanks.
Thank you.